It's Street Talk with Loretta Rose and today we're on location at a town hall meeting hosted by Russell County School District and Superintendent Dr. Brenda Coley. Well, we're gonna take you inside because the community, parents and students are all invited to this town hall meeting. You don't want to miss it because they're gonna share with us about the vision and strategic plans of the district. It's Loretta Rose on location with BEAM TV. Alright, now we're talking to a team member with Russell County School District as well. Tell us your first and last name and your title.
Hi, I'm Sarah Kimmel and I'm the Director of Federal Programs.
Wow, wow, wow. So what are you bringing to the parents in the community tonight at this amazing town hall meeting?
So I have the honor of speaking about our third goal, which is to improve the culture and climate here in the Russell County School District.
We do listen, but we need you to be an advocate with us. We need you to help us. We need you to work with us, tell us what's going on, help us in the community to uplift the Russell County School District. The Russell County School District, this is my third year in this district and it's awesome. Dr. Coley is amazing. She is a servant leader. She wants what's best for these students. She wants what's best for these teachers. I was just before you guys all came in here today, the principals were sitting around over there from Mount Olive Primary and Mount Olive Intermediate and they were talking about what they're about to do for their faculty, like the 12 Days of Christmas and reindeer games and you're doing it, she's doing it.
And even though I am a part of all the goals in the strategic plan, culture and climate is something that not only our superintendent, Dr. Coley, is really supportive of, but all of our administrators, our faculty and staff. We are working to focus in on just making the environment more welcoming for our students, for our parents. This town hall meeting tonight is an example of us inviting the community in, allowing them to ask any questions that they want to. So part of my role is to be involved in that. I run a parent advisory group that we're actually meeting with this week at Russell County Middle School. And we just want, through the culture and climate goal, we want to let our community know that we need you. We want to work with you and we need you to join us and work with us so that we can make Russell County a better school district.
I love it, I love it. This is what's happening in Russell County. And we're gonna take you inside so you can see what's happening at this Russell County School District Town Hall meeting. The community and parents and students are all invited to be a part. We're gonna take you inside.
We have this one. So at this time, I'd like to introduce and have you help me welcome Dr. Brenda Coley, our superintendent. We are very fortunate to have Dr. Coley. She's spent all of her life here in Russell County. She's a product of Russell County. This is, you don't hear this often, but this is her eighth year as superintendent here in Russell County. So we're very, very pleased and thrilled with that. And she's really taken our district to new heights and we are destined for excellence. And just, just her vision and her faith just inspires me every day and it just motivates our employees and our students. And Russell County is a great place to be because of this leadership. She never takes credit though. She is the leader, but she always gives credit to her team. So, Dr. Coley?
Thank you so much, Ms. Thompson. When she said this is her eighth year, you know this, I clap, right? It's always excited to be. Because guess what? It's not something that I take lightly. I'm very grateful to serve as the superintendent of Russell County School District. So thank you so much for being here. This is something new. We are having town hall meetings and the purpose of our town hall meetings, as Ms. Thompson stated earlier, is that we want to do a better job of engaging our community. We want to tell our story. We want you to be a part of telling our story. And we also want to, to put names with faces. I know that many of you see our names on the website or you've heard of our names in the community or our students, you know, come home and say, you know, this person or that person was transportation or the principal. But we want our parents, we want our community members to know us. We, we want to build relationships with all of you. So it's exciting to be here and I'm very excited to have our youngsters here with us tonight. Let's give them a round of applause. I will say that it's a little different. We haven't had as many students, students in our audience, but we're happy. They're taking notes and I'm excited about that. I mean, they're just acting so professional. Like, let's give it up for our youngsters. Give them a round of applause. And I will say that this is a testament to great training, great training, because they're very attentive and they're, okay, got a wave right there? And they're taking notes. So we hope that this meeting is meaningful and we want, not just our parents, but we want our youngsters to benefit from this meeting as well because it's important for our students. It's important for you to know your leaders and to know the vision, the mission. Know about your school district. It's important. So we, we have some aspiring leaders here. I'm really excited to have you guys here tonight. So what, so what's the objective? What's the purpose of the town hall meetings? And, you know, as I said early, it's to meet the Russell County District Leadership Team. And I will tell you guys that I know that Ms. Thompson said that, you know, it's all about leadership and she's, you know, giving me all these kudos, but I have to say this, it's the team. We have an amazing team. I'm very proud to work alongside these awesome administrators. Having been in education for 30-plus years, I just say it that way. I'm very honored to, to serve alongside them and they're amazing because I know that they have the passion, they have the heart to serve. And it's all about servant leadership. Y'all know true leadership is about serving others. And we have the opportunity every day to serve our students, our teachers, our parents in this wonderful, great community. And so, thank you. So can we give a round of applause to the leadership team of Russell County School District? Y'all supposed to clap too, this. Yeah. We're proud to be leaders in this community. And so another reason, a purpose of this meeting is to understand the values of the Russell County School District. We want to share that with you. Our five strategic goals, our, for our plan. It's a five-year plan. We want to make sure that you guys are aware of the strategic plan. What are the goals? And we're here tonight to share those goals with you. Also, we want to highlight, again, I say we want to tell our story. We want to highlight the school district's accomplishments. We have a lot to celebrate. And so it's, we can't share all of it in the newsletter that we, I mean, quarterly, I think we do, most of the parents may not get a copy, but we do have it on our website. We have copies within all of our schools. But we can't share all of the accomplishments. So we want to tell our story. We want to share the challenges as well. There are many areas of development and we want you to be part of the change to help us continue to improve our school district. We also want to identify stakeholders, like we want to hear your concerns and your questions as well. We want to be able to address those. We want to talk about ways that you can get more involved so that we can, we can make greater accomplishments. You have a voice. We want you to know that. You have a voice as parents, as members of this community, as partnerships, like our Helping Families Initiative. They have been with us throughout this process and we are so appreciative because that's a true partnership. Our military liaison here, you know, we're so happy that you're here tonight. And we want to strengthen our relationship with our military population. We want to make sure that all of our stakeholders, that you have a voice because we are stronger together. There's power in what? Unity. And so we are very, again, excited to be here. It is a great day to be a warrior. It's a great day to be a warrior. I don't know whether we're just tired tonight or if it's still the Thanksgiving meal we still stuff from the turkey and the dressing and all the other campings, but teamwork wins greater. And that's a theme that we've embraced this year and we want you to embrace that theme as well. So part of this, you know, this initiative is that we want to come to you. We want to, we want, we want you to embrace this thing, that teamwork, it takes a team to achieve greatness. And we want you to be a part of our team. So teamwork wins greater. So what is the vision of Russell County School District? It is to inspire, empower and to educate with excellence. And notice, with excellence. Everything that we do, we want to do it in a spirit of excellence because we want our kids, our students, we want them to have the very best, the very best resources, the very best teachers, the very best facilities. We want to inspire them. We want to empower them. What is our mission? It's to engage students in quality learning experiences that will prepare them for success in college, career and life. So we focus on teaching the whole child. It's, it's not just about the academics, but it's also making sure that we address the mental capacity, making sure kids are socially adapted. We want to address the whole child. And again, our theme is what? Teamwork wins greater. So again, thank you all so much for being here. We are just so proud of accomplishments and we, we thank you. Before I, I guess I need to go into the strategic plan, just to share those goals. So we have four goals and our directors, they're gonna come and share each goal and some of the strategies that we are implementing to accomplish these goals. Goal one is that we want to create a safe environment. We know that that is priority. Our kids can't learn if they're not in a safe environment. And I will tell you that we are very intentional about school safety. We have an amazing safety director who's not here. He's actually working on a project in Texas right now. So that he can, you know, another initiative that we are implementing to improve safety and that's where he is right now, working on that project. But we have so many upgrades and we have, I'm not sure if Mr. Aces or Ms. Thompson's gonna share with us tonight about our goals for safety. Goal number two is that we want to establish and maintain a professional, diverse workforce. It's all about improving. And we invest in our employees because we know that we are lifelong learners and it's imperative that we develop continuously, all of us. Goal number three is to create a positive culture and climate. I hope that you've taken notice of all the upgrades. I hope that when you walk into our buildings, that you feel safe and welcome and that you feel the hospitality from, starting from, whether it's the school administrator, assistant. We, you know, that is very, very important. How do you feel when you walk into any school in Russell County School District? Do you feel welcome? Do our students feel, do you, as parents, teachers, this is an urging environment? Because, you know, the old saying, kids don't care how much you know until they know how much you would care. And so we want to make sure that our employees and our faculty and staff, that they are, that they're caring. That we take time to listen, that we embrace the whole child. So, and the last goal is to, of course, improve academic growth and achievement. Because if goal number one, two and three, if all those things in place, then guess what? Goal number four will take care of itself. We will see improvements in academics, right? But first, gotta start with the safe environment and we have to make sure that we're continuously growing as educators in the environment, that we want students to know that we care, that they are in a warm, welcoming environment. So again, these are our four goals and Ms. Thompson's gonna come at this time and introduce our amazing directors that will speak on each one of these goals. Thank you so much again.
And now we have caught up with Mary Mahone with Helping Family Initiative. Thank you so much for your time. You are always involved in the community. Why was it so important for you to be here for this town hall meeting that is hosted by Russell County School District? It has been phenomenal.
Amen. Well, I'm with Helping Family Initiatives, which is with the Russell County District Attorney's Office. And Helping Families works with families that are experiencing truancy, unexcused absences and may have some behavior issues in the home. We're charged with helping enforce the Alabama Compulsory Attendance Law, which says that your child has to be in school from the age of six to 17 and if they're enrolled in school, they have to behave. And so we partner with Russell County Schools to identify those families so that they won't be involved with the DA system. We're a preventative agency to try to work with the families to find out what's causing their child to experience those unexcused absences or develop those behaviors in the home.
I want students to know that all of the adults around them believe in them and we are holding them accountable for doing their best work at school. That doesn't mean that everybody looks the same. Doesn't mean that everybody learns it the same way. It doesn't mean that everyone gets it at the same time. It simply means they must do their best every day. That's all we're challenging our students to do. Be the best you possible.
So it may be that they're having transportation issues. It might be medical issues. It might be mental health issues. And we work to identify resources that we can guide them to, to help them decrease those issues in the home. So we really appreciate our partnership with the Russell County Schools and we want to support them however we can. And so attending these town hall meetings is very important to us.
I love it, I love it. It's amazing. So how are we doing with truancy in the Russell County School District?
It is still an issue in the school systems, but we are working one family at a time to address it and to help it to decrease. So I think over the past years, the assistance Helping Families has been involved, it has been decreasing.
Awesome. So what more can the community do to help you?
Our community can help by participating and supporting our school system, supporting your children, helping them to be prepared for school, to reach out to the teachers, reach out to the schools if you are having issues and come out and be a part of what's going on in your child's school.
I love it, I love it. Shout out to Russell County School District and Superintendent Dr. Brenda Coley. We have had a great time here being informed, ineducated about the direction of Russell County School District. And this lovely lady, she just blessed my heart because she was a voice for all students around the world. I love it when you share, if you have a question, ask. It's okay to ask a question.
Whatever support you need, darling, you ask your teachers any questions. We come to school to learn. We learn by asking questions. Anything you have a question about, ask every day. We want you to be the best you that you can be. Got it? Any question, ask your question.
I need for every student to hear that around the world.
Oh, it is absolutely essential that all of our children ask questions. We learn by asking questions. You are at school every day for the purpose of being engaged in instruction. When you have a question, ask. This is where we come to become better every day.
I love it. And you said you want every student to learn something every day.
Absolutely. We should hold ourselves and our children accountable for making good use of the instructional time allocated to them. Every day at school should be a learning day. We learn something and there's no age limit to learning. Get excited about it, get engaged in it and be better because of it.
Yes. And I love it when you said to ask, parents, ask your student about an AR book. I was like, oh, she's taking me back.
There are some buzzwords that our parents can use that will help their students understand the value that parents place on the time that they spend at school every day. We challenge our students to increase their volume of reading and we, we measure this by the Accelerated Reader Program, our AR program. And we challenge every child to read a good book every day. Spend some time reading a book and parents, use it as your cheat sheet. Ask your child, did you read an AR book today? Ask your child, what did you learn in science today? Go over the basic math facts with your student every day. Those are little things that you can do to make education a priority in your home. When it becomes a priority in your home, it becomes a priority in their classrooms. And that's what it takes for us to increase the academic achievement of our students.
And she makes me excited about it. I mean, you are just so amazing, a great spokesperson for Russell County School District as well. Tell us your first and last name and your title here.
I am Marcita Lewis and I am Director of Curriculum Instruction for grades K through five.
Amazing. Well, you are a blessing. I love it. This is what's happening in Russell County. And now we have caught up with the principal of Mount Olive Primary School. Tell us your first and last name.
My name is Lisa Rushing.
Alright. So how proud of you of the growth? You all have had a lot of growth here in Russell County School District and with Mount Olive Primary and Intermediate School as well. How proud of you?
Well, we're very proud. I feel that many people are coming to our, to school district or coming back to our school district from other districts because they see the great things happening here in Russell County and all the great things that we have going on with our curriculum, with our climate and our culture and just the way that we love our students and help them grow.
So for our students, there's a lot of things that we're doing. We're starting to build student programs where students are leading programs. We've really connected with the Military Coalition, Education Coalition, and we're doing things in school with that.
We put our money where our mouth is at. In the past two years, we've invested close to half a million dollars in our program's target just to improve the college career rate in Detroit and hopefully those numbers will actually show that it is working.
Amazing. And tell us, who's your principal for the intermediate school?
The principal for the intermediate school is Dr. Vanita Parums.
Awesome. So we want to thank you so much for sharing with the community. Now, how can the community partner more with you all as principals?
Well, we love to have community partners. We love our partners in education. So we encourage all of you to give us a call at Mount Olive Primary and Mount Olive Intermediate Schools. Just reach out to us, tell us you want to partner with us. We would love to have you come and be a part of our school and help us as a partner in education.
Awesome. Well, you've heard it from the principal. Make sure you partner. They want your support. They want to tag team with you to make the community better and for our students. This is what has been happening in Russell County at Mount Olive School. Stick around. We're gonna have the entire program from start to finish. You're watching here on BEAM TV. And now we have caught up with the principal of the intermediate school here at Mount Olive. Tell us your first and last name.
Vanita Parums.
Awesome. So how proud of you of this, the accomplishment. We are so proud. We see the growth. This school has expanded.
Yes. I mean, we've made amazing growth here. Russell County is just a great place to be. And Mount Olive, I love being here at Mount Olive. We are a 3-5 school. So we serve, yeah, the ones that just a step above the K-2, but we're combined on the one roof. So two schools in one location.
I love it, I love it, I love it. I love it how you all have so many resources for the parents. I love it how your protocol, there's a step in place for the parents and the students at all times. So no child should be left behind. And that's what you all are assuring here at Russell County School District. So how can parents partner more with you as the principal of the intermediate school?
So we love to have our parents to partner with us. So we offer, you know, various opportunities. They can always call to the school, 334-468-5002. Or you can go to our website, on Facebook. Or you can just walk in and ask, how can we help? So we welcome community leaders, community members, come and partner with us.
And then as long as we can keep an open communication with you guys and work together, and we want to work with you, that's gonna make a huge difference. So...
So what is your reaction to this wonderful town hall meeting? Because this has been phenomenal. I've really never been to a town hall meeting for school like this. This has been so impressive, not only for myself and the viewers, but for the community. You all made it happen.
Yes, but we couldn't make it happen without the community, without the district leaders. Dr. Cole has been done a phenomenal job. The school board members, they are absolutely phenomenal, but we still need our other stakeholders. We need the parents to continue to assist us. So this is our third town hall meeting and first one we had just a few at the others. But Mount Olive, we thank you so much for the parents, community members, some of the ones that didn't have kids here, but they live in the community. So thank you so much for just reaching out and supporting us and just being concerned about how you can help your child and what we're doing and making sure that they're holding us accountable as well.
Wow. Well, she said it all. I love it. It's inclusive. And that is so true. There were parents from another district here present tonight. This is what's happening in Phoenix City and Russell County. You're watching here on BEAM TV. It's Street Talk with Loretta Rose.
So I'm here for the good part. We want to talk about accomplishments and all getting to participate in part of this. This is the celebration part. And I'm gonna go with this really quickly. So girls, boys, please, please just celebrate with us. These are our accomplishments. So as Mr. Cook shared with us that we are so proud and this is history, that it is the highest graduation rate ever. And that Mr. Cook said, because they, effort, the college career rating, he said 80%, but that's been certified recently to 80, 84%? 85%? And that exceeded the state average. That's increased, that's from 80 to 84% the college career rating. What was the certification? We come, this is why we had to change, we had to change this.
Well, what is the college career rating that you just certified?
Yes.
Uh, 84?
84%.
Yes, 84.
So we need to get that changed, but it's changing.
No, I'm sorry, I lied. My discretion, again. 80.4 is what you just circled, sorry.
Okay, so television schools performing above the state average on the ACAP and I, Ms. Lewis, kind of Lewis had earlier. We all, this is something to celebrate. We have an increase in student enrollment. We're up, I think, 100 in some students. And that's great because growth is important. Because if we're not doing things correctly, they have, you know, parents have options. You know, they can go to private school. They have other surrounding school districts, but we're happy that we're seeing growth. Also, we're very happy to share that we have a full-time nurse counselor, instructor coach and school resource officer at every school that I was in. So this year, we are one of the very few school districts in the state of Alabama that we have employed a full-time dental health coordinator. And also this year, with the Help Over our Directors Committee, we received a grant to support an at-risk coach to work with our at-risk students. That is something that we are very proud of and we know that we're dealing a lot with students with mental health issues, just behavior discipline issues. And so we are putting strategies and measures in place to address those issues. Also, all schools are purpose, are designated. Thanks to Ms. Thompson and our wonderful principal. We've helped you for several years now, but we are, also we're proud that we are one-to-one technology. And we have an amazing technology department.
What does purpose serve that they do?
It's, we, all of our schools have student, student programs and there's certain things that we have to do every year. Designated every other year. Things that you have to meet for our military.
Our military population. So we started off with the high school and the middle school and recently this year, all of our elementary schools became, started designated as well. Although, new this year, we have some, we are always expanding and growing. So we're very proud that we have a robust program at Wisconsin Middle School. And also new this year at Wisconsin High School is a television production class. And it is amazing. If you haven't had a chance to stop by, I encourage you to please stop by. We are really having evolved this program. Have a great teacher, that's a local guy that joined our faculty. That's an amazing job. Although we have upgraded our junior ROTC partnership range at Wisconsin High School. That was a hundred, about a hundred thousand dollar project. It's, it's really good. Our junior ROTC program, if you haven't heard of it, I mean, they are amazing. So we are very, very proud. We have over 100 ROTC initiatives awarded last year. We have over a hundred TDs awarded last year. Um, so very proud of our 3K program. It's Kimma does excellent jobs with our 3K program. Uh, and we're growing. We have three programs here, one at Ol- no, one at Oliver and two in Illinois, one at Dixie. And hopefully we can continue to grow. Gotta have faith. Um, extended learning opportunities. Uh, I'll say one of our parents, and what are we doing to address kids that are regressing? We have multiple learning opportunities, um, beyond the school day, whether it's tutors during the day, whether it's after school tutoring, or whether, you know, we have free schools. There are so many different intervention programs with, um, school officers that make the job, supporting with our curriculum director. And make sure that kids, sometimes they're just not doing anything during the school day. So there are multiple extended learning opportunities for our students. Also, we have, if you look around the school district, we have some of the best facilities in the state of Alabama. And we're constantly upgrading. We just recently received notification, I don't think I shared this with the director. We, we go for the, the, the largest amount, which was the, the capital project grant was about five D's. Of course, we didn't get five D's, but we're happy that we got six hundred thousand. We continue to, you know, expand and improve our facilities. Uh, partnership with Helping Families Initiative is always, we're just excited about what we're doing. I had a conversation with one of our professors last week, and he told me, help me, help me. You know, I asked him, I said, you need to make sure that you find that, because they do amazing work for our families. And that's exactly what they are, they're, they're, it's an organization to help our families. They're not there to, um, to harm them, but to help them and to, so that the kids can, we can get them on track to perform activities. Also, um, very proud of our Russell County Education Foundation and Ms. Thompson and her leadership. We're organizing, we have some of the best, uh, members, uh, of the, this, this foundation. I mean, they're working really hard. Um, we provide grants for our, you know, faculty and staff. I mean, they've done multiple fundraisers, and they actually invested their own personal donations. We are just so proud of all of these accomplishments. And there are so many more. But one thing I will tell you, program, you know, upgraded facilities. But the one thing that I'm most proud of this great, amazing team that we have. I look out in the audience, Mr. Davis. Mr. Davis, you know, you've been with me a long time. He remember me as a teacher, as a principal. You know, and when I say this literally, we are a family. I mean, I can tell you that Dr. Raff, she's just, we probably all celebrate her, her grandbaby Ava. Why would I know her grandbaby's name? Why would Hudson? I mean, if y'all can take this for granted, but it's important that we, we have, we, we, we're authentic. It's, it's not just one of those things that I'm saying. Like literally, I love this team. And it's important to hire good, take care of, you know, your, your team members and love them. Like we can, just like your students. Because if we're united, then what do you think is gonna happen with the teachers and with the students? It, it's the family atmosphere. That is so important because I absolutely love my team. They may not all love me, but I love them. You know, I'm not just about the work, but about them individuals. Like what's going on with them, you know, developing those relationships. And we want to have a relationship with you because when you know each other, when you get to know each other, you work so much better. If he, Mr. Davis shared with me before we got started, he was like, hey, Caleb graduated. I was like, Caleb graduated? That was one of my babies from, uh, elementary. And I watched her, she sent me a couple of years ago, hey, Dr. Cole, would you write me a letter? I just, one of my board members called me over Christmas break and said, hey, Dr. Cole, he was calling me because one of our former students is now selling cars at, uh, Nissan. And he said, Caleb said that, oh, I love Dr. Cole. And it just blessed my heart because those are the things, I want them to have great memories. And like when I said, tell Caleb a problem with her, he said, oh, she knows. Because it's all about relationships. And that's the kind of environment that we're trying to create. Not just for our students, but just for our, you know, our employees, our team members. If anything going on with them personally, I, I'm all over there with you. I wanna know. Because I know, I can know what to pray about, I wanna come check on them, I wanna make sure they all are right. Because we do want to retain, it's not just about recruiting, but it's also about retaining. Because we want the best for our students, so I know that. Like right now, if we did a survey, all, they're coming from different backgrounds. Mr. Cook came from Phoenix City. You know, we got Mr. Ace, he was working for the State Department, you guys. And he came to work for Russell County. So that speaks volumes that we're doing something right. So why would he wanna be a part of a team that's not progressive? We're doing something right. We, Gina Rudolph came from the State Department. I'm gonna be honest with you, you know, most people, you know, that's not proceeding. You up at the State Department, you wanna know? Because it's something that we're doing great. Not that, it's not about me, but it's about this team and what we're doing and the atmosphere that we're creating. As Miss Kimma said, they have options. Our teachers have options. But we want to create an environment that's so amazing that the forty-five minute drive don't matter. And we do that because guess what? It's all about the future of our kids and, and making sure that they have the best administrator. We have an amazing team. And I, I'm proud of it. So I just say tonight, um, kudos to all of you. We want you to be a part of that. We want to get to know you better. That's why we're here. Cause it's all about building those relationships. And they are lifelong relationships. If my students get text me, call me, I'm just telling you, if I gotta stay up all night, they need a letter of recommendation, whether it's for a promotion, job, whatever, I'm gonna make it happen because they're my baby. So I call it on because they have to tell us. I'm very passionate about my baby. I really mean that. And I think that it's all about building a team. My friend Loretta, back there in the back, she knows, I'm gonna say this, and I'm sitting out front. But Loretta, and I'm so happy to see you, like, during my Christmas shift, I was just doing my own thing or whatever, and I got this email from this sweetheart. She just reached out to me and just saying, I just felt led to reach out to you. You guys are doing amazing work. What can I do? What can I do to support you, you know, your school? What can I do? I mean, how many people get a call just to say like, whether it's, and I'm gonna tell you, I just remember, it's about relationships. As a principal, we don't count the students, we don't have a lot of money. Her husband DJ, I was like, I need DJ. We got you. Whether it was a donation, whether I needed a prayer, or I needed some encouragement, or whatever. But it's about building relationships in this community. So that when we have things or need things, I can pick up the phone and call Judge Bellamy I need, or whatever. Because I'm telling you, relationships, they're very important. And she, she knows about our story. I mean, like, I've been in the superintendent for eight years. She knew me before, before I was superintendent, right? And as a principal, she knows I always had a heart for our kids. And I will fight to the ears to make sure that we get the best for our kids. I've lost a lot of friendship over there, and I will continue to, as long as these babies right here, our kids get the best. I'm a, I mean, I'm a product of Russell County. I graduated as a student, minimum, other than, and Mr. Davis told me, he was like, you know, cause he's a former educator as well, there's so many of them that, you guys know our story. Miss Rushing, all of these wonderful people that's on our team, Miss Jones coming from Montgomery, these people coming from all over. They have options. They could go anywhere else, but if we don't take care of them at here, as community members, they can go other places. They have options. But we want them to be here. Because if we want success, we gotta invest in, in making sure that our kids get the best, the very best. Okay, that's another. Okay, I, I think you really talented, okay? And I'm, challenges. Just like we have a lot to celebrate, but we do have challenges. We have scores, look at our data, there are areas, uh, deficiencies, areas that we have to really focus on. I know math is a focus area. And we're very transparent. If we, if we, if there are areas or if there are things that if we don't get it right, you come to me. Okay, we gonna fix it. Because we're not perfect. I think I heard somebody say that earlier, that we're, we're not perfect, we're human. And guess what? We make mistakes sometimes, we get it wrong, but our goal is to get it right. And we need you to help us. Middle school, A-CAP, youth scores, we know that that's a low. We have general CMT, it's, we know that we have a, a film, uh, program in Illinois. And we're trying to explain that, because Rushing's been begging me to wear. And we have a classroom here for one, we're just working on the resources, press, our directors, all of us working hard to try to make sure that we, um, submit the grant so that we can get the funds to, to fund these programs. Also, we have a lack of elementary fine arts. We know what the research is. It's important to have fine arts. And we want our kids to have music and, uh, art and all these other programs that they have across the United States. Like we want to compete. So those are things that we're working on. We know that there's no parent and family engagement. And we need your help to get more parents involved because we are what? Drunker together. Also, personally, that's, that was shortage, a huge shortage of teachers. And we have to spend so much more time in training and investing, I think. And sometimes we think about, well, when we look at our school, two percent, we wanna make sure that we're real, we're with it. Because we have a lot of non-traditional educators, which requires more professional development. We're doing a great job though. Now, I should look at me, I'm one, but you're doing a great job. And so we are very interested in this, born to us and amazing job of, of building those relationships and recruiting. Cause we, we, we don't wanna just recruit anyone. I mean, do you, I mean, you've been trusted up with your baby. Guess what? We don't want just anyone. We want a very what? Best employee. Um, also, the lack of instructional resources. I mean, we have to compete. We do so much more with the left in Russell County School District. When we, sometimes we're compared to Auburn City, or we're compared to Lee County. But if you really understand, and I see it's a whole wall, do you, Mr. Al, would you wave your hand? I mean, that's another whole topic if you talk about the budget and the funding. Because we, we do so much more with left because of creativity, because of innovative ideas. I mean, you just gotta get the best people. Grant writer, that's right. Grant writer. Miss Kimma, raise your hand. Tell them about that grant that you're releasing, that Strummer Connection Grant.
Uh, it was just a little grant.
How much was it though?
It's a little over three hundred thousand dollars.
What we talked about earlier, the at-risk, we would not have had that grant if she had not submitted. The grant that I just told you about, the six hundred thousand, we didn't have to fly for that grant. But I would go with everything that we can get for our kids. Mr. Oliver helped me. We submitted the grant probably a month ago. We got notification that we got six hundred thousand dollars. But that's because of good faith effort. Like because we want the best, and so we can't have flatterers on our team. We gotta have administrators that's gonna go for it. That's what we do it for. Mr. Davis, I promise you, we trying. So these are our challenges. And Ms. Thompson's gonna come back and we're gonna rest it off. Thank y'all.